Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, um, welcome. At this time, I'll call our September 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones. I hope mine is. Um, roll call.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Yeah.
Phil Chancellor. Jana Jaker.
Here.
Matt Glasenby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonnette Reese.
Here.
Bob Wrightenbaugh.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process of this public meeting of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission will be presented with agenda items by the city planning department. The representative for the agenda item will have the opportunity to make comments and/or answer specific questions from the commission. I'll then open a public hearing and as appropriate, this will be the opportunity for you to address the commission about the agenda item at hand. We want everyone to be heard. I ask that you keep your time to talk to five minutes and please keep your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I will close the public hearing and the representative and staff will then have the opportunity to answer any questions and respond to any issues brought up during the hearing. I'll open the floor to commissioners for discussions, motions, and a vote. And the commission will vote based on state and local laws, city comprehensive plan 2030, and the good of the community. Having summarized the basics of the planning commission hearing and voting process, I would also like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regard to subdivision plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in the state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by this commission. While public hearings are required on each plat and we welcome any and all public comments concerning these items, please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements codified in laws and regulations previously described. Finally, I'd like to make it a point specifically for the public in attendance. As you know, the planning commission is only an advisory board to the city council except in the case of subdivision decisions, which we are charged with making the final decision. All others will be made by city council after consideration of the planning commission's position. I'd also like to ask that if you intend to speak at the public hearing this evening, please sign in by stating your name and address for the record. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open citizens' communication. If you would like to address anything that is not on tonight's regular agenda or items that are on our consent agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, close citizens' communication and we will begin with some old business. Staff, I believe we have some updates on that.
My apologies for the confusion. So, the update, if we're looking for an update on the Keel property as of last night or two nights ago, excuse me, city council adopted the 280 focus area study. And that impacts a couple of items on your agenda for tonight. It does impact the Keel annexation. And they have requested a proponent to the next meeting, which would be in October. And so, would you normally make a recommendation and motion for postponement?
Yes.
So I think that's all you would need to do tonight for this item and the next item on the agenda. Correct.
For items one and two, they've decided the same decision. They made the same decision.
That would be correct, postponing both items.
What's the date of the next meeting? Okay, if I could get some motion to postpone.
I'll move to postpone. Can we do them both at one time?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay, I'll move to postpone 2021-367, the date certain of 10/14. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the rezoning.
Move to postpone 2021-365 to a date certain of 10/14.
Thirty. All right, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and on to item number three on old business, Ernest's annexation.
Good evening, commissioners. This is one of four applications that you'll have before you tonight related to this property, the Ernest property. The first request is an annexation request to annex a little over 64 acres into the city limits. It is currently in the county and has no zoning. The subject property is located a little bit at the intersection of US Highway 280 and North College Street. Here is a legal description of the property. It does not include this property, which is owned by the same owner that owns the entirety of the property, but at this time is not interested in annexing into the city limits, although we'd certainly encourage that to make it a more complete annexation. Staff recommends approval of the annexation as it is within the optimal boundary and adjacent to current city limits. The property owner is represented by Holland Homes LLC. And he is, TJ Johnson is here to represent the property owner and Holland Homes and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have anything to say? I mean, you're welcome to speak.
On the annexation, no ma'am, to Logan's point, the seller, Mr. Ernest, that's a personal residence, about five acres. We would love to have it. He's made it very clear that that particular portion is not for sale. But I agree with Logan, we would love to annex the whole thing. We just don't have any control over that portion. But no further comment on the annexation, happy to take your questions.
This does not require a public hearing. Commissioners?
Is it, are we under bound by any state ordinance or anything that we have to annex this as it's shown? Or can we make some adjustment to it or ask any questions or? It looks like subdivisions, if they meet the regulations, we gotta pass them, but.
The city council is the final authority on annexation, so at this stage, you're making a recommendation based on what is presented to you tonight.
What was the explanation for not including this piece of property?
The property owner is not willing or wanting to annex in, so it was not submitted as part of the annexation application.
Or sell, I think.
Not for sale. It's not for sale. I think it's their personal residence.
Can you come to the mic?
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the question, Mr. Glasenby. So I represent the buying entity. We would love to annex this into Auburn and further develop it. The seller, Mr. Ernest, is keeping that five acre portion, that's a personal residence. And he is not interested in annexing his portion that will be separated at the sale. So that's the reasoning. I agree with you, I'd love to bring it all in. We just don't exercise any control over that property.
Well, to me, it creates somewhat of a, if you take into consideration College Drive, it creates somewhat of a, of an enclave into this side of the road. From a planning standpoint, it'd be, I think, much better overall if it could be included. And I'm kind of inclined to wait on the annexation until the owner decides to do something a little different maybe. And I don't think we have to annex it.
We don't have to annex it, but the only way we can annex it is either by legislative act or by the voluntary request of the owner. So, if we leave it outside the city limits, then we have only subdivision control on it. If we annex it, at least with all that except that one parcel, we do have some control.
Yes, but we won't have any control if subsequently something else is done with that property that's not in the best interest of the people that buy homes there or for the city, because we'll have no control over it. So, I think what, I think what Max alluding to and what I'm thinking is it needs to be all or nothing. You can't, in my opinion, you can't, it leaves the future homeowners and the city without control of a very obvious large chunk of property right in front of their homes, right amid their homes.
And I have actually a question for engineering, maybe. What happens with the length of, on college, how far curb cuts wise? Like, does this five acres, if annexed or changed, do they lose their curb cut if this is developed?
It would depend on what they redevelop it as. We allow reuse of existing curb cuts as long as the intensity of what's proposed is not too much or there's not a lot of accidents. You know, if they were to put another residence on this and it's just a single family residence, the existing curb cut would likely be allowed to stay. If they put Dollar General or Chick-fil-A, then we would evaluate it differently. But we would also evaluate it at that time based on what's around it.
And if it helps as part of the planning process, working with staff, we've also, we're going to provide two access points to that property from the interior of our proposed development. That way, we can alleviate any curb cut requirements you guys could in the future, then force them to use that access instead of, you know. If we were able to do what we hope to do, we'll come in and put turn lanes and everything off of North College very safe. And then that way, they could access that property through ours instead of through North College, just for your consideration.
If they chose to, they could choose to do, if they stay in the county, they could do anything they want to do with it.
They could, but, you know, that's an ALDOT right of way there, so they would have to get a permit to change their curb cut, to Allison's point. If it's a single family residence and they reuse it.
It is today, but my concern is if it doesn't get annexed today and we annex everything else, there's, we have no control over what happens in the future if it stays in the county, if it stays outside of the city. Is that not correct?
I would defer to staff, but zoning wise, but with that being an ALDOT right of way, they're going to have to get an ALDOT permit to put in any sort of new driveway. And I can tell you from dealing with them that that's unlikely to happen when we're willing to provide them access.
Well, what if they just want to put up five billboard signs there and stays in the county? The city would have no recourse at all. They could just do it.
Using that same logic, yeah, you don't now and you wouldn't have it on the 60 acres either. At least in this scenario, you've got control of 64 acres, even if you don't have all 69.
If I could, Chairman.
Yes.
When we met yesterday or two days, maybe yesterday, right? Staff's hope was that we might be able to come up with a way, a plan to actually annex everything. And I mentioned that to those of you who were able to attend the agenda packet meeting. Yeah, it's just not possible. And so the question is, do you, at this point, do you go ahead and support the annexation of 64 acres that you would then gain control over at the, you know, expense of not being able to control this other little parcel of land? The hope would also be that at some point in the future, when that parcel, it changes hands or something else happens, that they would want to be annexed. They would want the ability to have water and sewer, things of that nature from the city. And they'd have to be annexed to do that. We did add into your report, there are five different items on this property in there. And we have added in that handout that you received tonight, some other comments that speak to the issue that the applicant mentioned on the easements, the cross-access easements to adjacent county properties out there. And so we hope that by doing that, if somebody came in later on, it was no longer a house and they wanted to put something commercial there, for instance, you know, we would do everything we could to work with ALDOT and make sure that they understood that we've already provided access through other means, that we would not want an additional access point to be there. So, we're trying to do everything we can to address those future issues now. And I think that's the key, is do you annex as much as you can now and wait for the rest of it later?
For the record, I would love to bring it in. I just can't get a hold of it. We want to be in Auburn.
Thank you. Anything, any other questions?
I would just say I'm not in favor of forcing a property owner to be annexed into the city, especially for their personal residence. And if this is developed in its entirety around it, I think in the future, we'll probably have some control over what happens to that piece. And we'll be able to use what's around it as a sort of a benchmark. I would rather have the rest of it be in the city limits than have a large chunk of property along 280 that's up for grabs by the county.
Intersection. Okay.
Thank you.
And if I can add just one thing. The annexation policy does say that considerations should only be given to the annexation of the entire parcel. So, this is a parcel in and of itself and that residence is on parcel as well. There has been no subdivision of the property?
It's an existing separate parcel, yeah. So they're not carving it out really, it's already done, yeah. Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I'll move to approve 2021-371. I'll start the staff comments.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
Roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Glasenby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
No.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next application for this property is a rezoning request to rezone the northern portion of the property, which is approximately 45 acres, which is this area shown in yellow, from rural pending the annexation at city council to CDD Comprehensive Development District. Comprehensive Development District, you know, kind of, some of you were asking about the 280 focus area study. That was approved by city council, so it did change the future land use for the property. The previous designation on the northern portion of the property was 280 corridor reserve, which was essentially a placeholder district for when we would get to the 280 study. And the southern portion was designated as rural. Moving into the new designations on the right-hand side, the northern portion is designated as Gateway Commercial. And the southern portion is designated as low-density residential. With the plan proposed, I've kind of overlaid that with those designations. And you can see the definitions for those designations there on the right. Based on what they're proposing with the zoning and how that matches up with the future land use plan, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning to CDD. But I did want to kind of give you some background information on what the base zoning would allow. With PDDs, they're required to have a base zone. There are certain districts that have to have that underlying zoning applied before a PDD can move forward. And so, with CDD, there's a maximum density allowed of nine and a half dwelling units per acre. You can see there's four residential uses allowed by right and a few commercial, non-residential uses also allowed by right. Staff does recommend approval of that rezoning based on the future land use plan. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Go back to the slide before real quick, so I can just read every word. Thank you. And that is the CDD portion, but what about the Gateway Corridor overlay? Is there any difference in the two of those?
So the future land use is different from the zoning. The future land use designation is our advisory designation from Comp Plan 2030. And Gateway Commercial essentially envisions a largely, a mixture of uses that are largely non-residential. So this would be uses that are catered to the, kind of the traveling public and neighborhood uses with lots of attention paid to aesthetics, since it is along a major corridor.
Super helpful to have both of those, thank you for adding.
Yep.
This does require a public hearing. I would like to go ahead and open that now. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Comments, questions, representative or staff? Or motions? There's been some additions to this? Or?
The memo that you all received is mostly geared towards additional conditions that would be placed on the PDD
Okay.
and condition use requests.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There are, there are some staff comments that have not, you know, that are in the staff report that have not been changed. So no, there are staff comments, but nothing in addition to what's already in the packet.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve 2021-369 with all staff comments.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. On to number?
Yes, ma'am. The next request is for the southern portion of the property. They're requesting to rezone from rural district approximately a little over 18 acres from rural to DDH Development District Housing. Similarly, that lines up fairly well with the new designations on the property with the Comp Plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. The average for that low-density residential designation kind of envisions a average density of four dwelling units per acre. No commercial-type uses, no office uses, anything like that. Solely residential, which they have more or less provided. It does allow, the base zoning does allow a density of five and a half dwelling units per acre. It allows single-family detached by right. There are some other residential uses that are conditional. And churches are also, or religious institutions are also allowed by right.
My daughter, we also mentioned that single-family detached, but that carries with it the single-family definition?
Correct, that's correct. Whereas CDD does allow up to five unrelated occupants.
Oh, okay. So are they above the four dwelling units per acre that was sort of?
In their proposal for the plan development, they are slightly above the recommended density of four dwelling units per acre. If you give me just a moment here, I can pull that, let you know exactly what that is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just couldn't find it. It's in that area, right? Mm-hmm. Which I'm assuming is pushing it.
Four, 4.4 dwelling units per acre. And that's with the caveat of understanding that that is the total land area divided by the number of units.
Okay. It requires a public hearing. Open that now. Seeing no one, I will close that. Commissioners?
In the letter that we got tonight, are conditions that go with this item four?
No, sir, they go with the rezoning to Plan Development District over in the conditional use request.
I'd move to approve item four with any staff conditions.
It's number five, yes.
Oops, five, sorry.
372. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Can we take a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Glasenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear it.
Okay, the next rezoning application for the property is to apply the Plan Development District over a little over 64 acres. They have submitted a master development plan. And as of this morning, we have met with the applicant, discussed some of the concerns we have with the development plan. And so they will be providing some changes to it, to the plan, if some of these conditions are deemed acceptable by the planning commission and/or the applicant. The Plan Development District contemplates predominantly residential uses with a little over eight acres of commercial. The commercial is shown here in orange. Where basically the, there'd be two driveways coming into the development. Essentially boulevard-type entryways with an amenity lot located here. Um, essentially boulevard-type, uh, entryways with an amenity lot located here. The commercial would have a separate out parcel located here. Uh, the residential includes both sing, uh, single-family detached lots as well as twin home lots and townhome lots. The townhome lots are shown in red, which is approximately seventy units. The single-family detached are shown in yellow, approximately a hundred and eight units. And the twin home lots consisting of ninety-four units, so a total of three hundred and seventeen units. And the overall density for that development would be about five dwelling units per acre.
Does require a public hearing? I'll open that now.
I would like to go through, um, some of the conditions.
Okay, perfect.
With y'all.
I would appreciate that. Can I close the public hearing, or do you want me to wait?
Um, I think the applicant will probably have some, some things to say, but it's, it's up to you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, we'll move forward.
Um, so based on discussions with, uh, staff and applicant, these, I'm gonna run through kind of this list of conditions, uh, just for the record. Uh, the first kind of condition or request would be to relocate or remove the single-family lots located here. As I mentioned, the northern portion of the property is designated as gateway commercial, so largely should be, uh, commercial and non-residential uses. Um, residential uses are acceptable, but the predominant use in this area should be commercial. Um, if that is, if those lots are to be, are to be removed, we would recommend, uh, that the many, amenity lot be more centrally located, uh, within the development. Um, a request to provide, uh, cross-access easements or connectivity, uh, from the development to the, uh, other property owned by Mr. Ernest, uh, that's not currently in the city, or not currently being requested for annexation, through the commercial and townhome sections, as well as connectivity to these parcels located here and to the properties located here. A, uh, condition to require at least a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer to remain, you know, essentially keep the tree lines that's there now, um, along this portion of the property. A twenty-foot natural undisturbed buffer here. And then on all the, um, commercial components, uh, a twenty-foot landscape buffer. A condition to remove, uh, this single-family lot to allow, uh, better access to the townhome private drive here. Uh, vehicle turnaround shall be provided, uh, through the DRT process for these private drives, uh, to accommodate vehicular traffic, uh, public safety and, uh, environmental services. And a request to provide five-foot sidewalks on all public streets that are located in the development. And that, uh, the single-family lots located here, uh, shall provide rear, rear access or, uh, rear-loaded garages. And those are the conditions for additional staff conditions, uh, that were not previously in your packet. Um, in addition to that, the applicant, after meeting with us, has, uh, provided an additional incentive exchange, essentially to reduce the front setbacks for these lots in order to accommodate that rear access. So those are the, the conditions. Staff does recommend approval, uh, of the rezoning, uh, pending, pending all of those conditions. And the applicant is welcome to, you know, uh, either accept some of those terms or, uh, the Planning Commission can discuss those terms and kind of go from there.
We can require them.
I'm sorry? Or you can require, yes sir, yes sir.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for going over those so diligently, because that was a new addition for us. Applicant, do you have any?
Again, thank y'all so much for the time. We're excited to be, you know, looking at something else in Auburn, a place we love. Um, just a little bit of background on this, so the, the first time we sat down with the city was back in June. Logan, Allison, Katie, a bunch of folks kind of got around and we pondered the two-eighty corridor study and what would look good for that site and, and in earnest, we, we tried as hard as we could to fit that mold. Met again with staff this morning, went through some of these items, that's why it's a late addition. Um, something we would have been willing to do at any point, it's, now is the right time since City Council passed, um, on your recommendation, the, the, the future land use changes. Um, so I apologize if that feels rushed at all, certainly not our intention. This plan has not changed since June twenty-eighth, when I sent it in. Uh, never our intention to rush this, this is important. We think this is the north gate of Auburn. And we are very, very excited about the potential of developing that and want to do it with pride and something that the city is very excited about. And that's why we wanted to go the PDD route. It wasn't, it would honestly be more beneficial for us just to get the rezone CDD, DDH. We're permitted by right to do a lot of these things. We really want to work together with the city to find the fit and feel that everybody's excited about. And I apologize if that's too much backstory. So we worked through these items today and the only one that I would ask you to consider removing is item number one. Um, I don't feel that that much commercial works there yet. I feel like it could maybe one day. Um, we worked with the staff, you know, we're, we're a home builder. We want to build homes, we want to build quality homes in the city of Auburn, so kids can send their school to Auburn and be proud of Auburn. Um, so we added some commercial based on staff recommendation and that's what you see there today. I, my intention would be that I could build homes there for families. We understand the city wants some commercial, so that's what we're trying to show. I think it's important to note that we, we want to show that along all of the major roadways there. Like, we're showing only commercial along North College, in the zone that's supposed to be commercial. Showing only commercial along two-eighty. We feel that any commercial tucked behind that would struggle to thrive. It would be interior landlocked commercial with no visibility, with no access. And, and honestly, like, just laying my cards down, it, it would kill it for us. Now, that's maybe not important to Auburn, but it would kill it for us to where we would need to walk. And then we'd, I don't know what the next person might want to do. They might want to keep it in the county and put up billboards to Mr. McCord's point. Um, we want to come here and lay our cards down and show you exactly what we wanted to do, because we want to work together with you guys to find something that works for everybody. And, and we truly believe that the commercial is a great point there. Let's put it on North College, let's put it on two-eighty. And then what we do behind there is build a good quality home in the city of Auburn, so kids can send their, so folks can send their kids to Auburn schools. Because this is a great place to be. Um, we want to do the boulevards coming off of North College, so that's divided highway planted in the middle. Um, you'll end up with two turn lanes, traffic, no driveways on North College. Worked really hard to try to come up with something that works for everybody. Um, and that's why I feel confident in asking you to just consider taking off item number one, because that truly would, it would just make it go away for us. Now, maybe somebody else walks in and does it, um, but I just don't want to not take the opportunity to say that. Um, worked hard with the staff to find a way to make all these other items work. We're perfectly comfortable with that, anything that makes it better for everybody. You know, doubling the sidewalk requirements, increasing unplanted buffers, undisturbed buffers. Um, fine with that, that's a win-win for our homeowners and for the city. Um, but I truly believe that commercial piece, just, it doesn't serve, it really just doesn't serve anyone to have that much commercial there. There's several of those lots that are already there, could be built commercial, and it's just not happened yet. We feel like putting the rooftops there with our stuff will allow all those other lots to be commercial in the future. Um, so I would ask you to consider removing item one. Um, the rest of them, I was happy to work with staff to come up with those, those solutions and, um, would appreciate any feedback from, from Logan or, or Steve on that as well. But, um, thank you for the opportunity, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you say number one, to which one are you referring? Number one, there's several number ones on this sheet paper.
Oh, okay, now, that's a great point, the first one there. Um, remove the single-family detached lots on the north side of the amenity area. So basically, the staff request is to kill about sixty residential lots and make that all commercial north of the property, I mean, north of that power line cut through you can see. Um, and I just, I, I can honestly tell you that the feasibility of that, for us as the developer, it just isn't there.
In the short term. But, but, but we're, we need to carefully protect true commercial sites in the city.
I understand.
Okay, so you'd understand why, why they would be making that recommendation?
Oh, good, yeah, certainly, certainly, but I guess my, my stance on that is, what would happen is that this, this thing folds, right? And then it's, that, that land doesn't end, end up getting annexed at all. So what we're offering is kind of a, oh, what I think could be a win-win for the city. So you can guarantee eight acres, city of Auburn, commercial, and we can dictate all these requirements to us, because we're bringing it to them. But I, I, I can tell you with confidence that if we go fifteen acres of commercial there, it just, it just goes away for now. None of it happens. If, if we have to develop it, because we're home builders at heart. And I understand completely your point, I just think that that may set, it may set it back, I don't know that. Somebody else may scoop it up and put a Walmart there, I don't know. But, I can just tell you with confidence that it wouldn't be us. And, and again, that's, that's my problem, not y'all's, I completely understand your point.
So basically, what you want to do is build houses and if it takes putting a little commercial in, you'll do it. Is that, is that the plan?
Yes sir.
Minimum, whatever you can get, okay.
Yes sir.
Are we having our discussion?
We're asking questions of applicant and us, yes.
I mean, I don't have questions, but I have comments. It's progress. Well, you're welcome to go forward.
No, I, and, and I know, I understand what Warren's, the point you're trying to make and I had that same question myself about the acreage that was CDD. I don't necessarily have a problem with the residential in that area. I don't like the layout of this. Um, I think that the higher intensity housing should be closer to that commercial node, like the twin homes maybe. Um, and I, I also think that those amenities need to be moved away from the commercial, um, portions and you did not mention that, so I'm assuming that the applicant's fine with moving that down.
And for, for the record, the highest intensity is, it's five point five units per acre on the north side.
Well, I just meant those twin homes possibly might configure better back behind the commercial as opposed to single-family, I mean, I know they're all single-family, but twin homes seem to be a more logical transition next to commercial than, than.
Understood.
There was also a request to, I believe, keep multifamily as an option in that area.
I mean, I would just love to see some reconfiguration of that. I don't necessarily have a problem with those, uh, single-family homes being front-loaded garages.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
And I don't know, I mean, I know we love townhomes to be backloaded, but I'm just wondering if all those twin homes stay right there, how is a backloaded street gonna back up to those twin homes? And what does it do to those, I mean, they're very close together. So again, I just feel like that portion needs maybe just a little tweaking, um, to make that flow a little better. I mean, I'm not sure how you get a road back there and how you, I mean, there's a, there's a lot that would need to be done, um.
Can you, can you clarify which?
Didn't you say that, that, those right there, didn't you say that there was a, a condition that those be back?
Rear-loaded.
Rear-loaded garages, I mean, I don't, other than you have driveways along the front, but, um.
I think the thought there being that since this would be more of a through, throughway, to try and limit the number of curb cuts.
Curb cuts. I mean, does that fit appropriately back behind with all those twin home, are those twin homes?
These are, these are single-family.
No, I'm talking about the blue.
Blues twin.
Are those rear-load as well, or are they driveway, or what, what was the thought on that?
These are front-loaded, um, and kind of based on our conversation, it, it may be feasible to provide a, um, private drive.
I believe so, that was a staff recommendation, which, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about those twin homes and their backyards and do they want people coming along back behind them to pull into their garages, but.
Jana, there had, there was also discussion in regards to these lots to be able to, uh, one of the incentives and exchanges would be to reduce the setbacks for those, um, single-family homes, so the houses could be moved closer to the front.
Which makes sense, I mean, you'd have to be able to get a road in.
Acting, uh, adding that road would be more feasible.
Would there be additional buffering along the back, so the twin home folks don't have to stare at the cars driving?
There could be, there won't be any required if the Planning Commission sees to add.
I mean, I'm just.
As an ex, as a additional condition, you definitely could do that.
Trying to think about the person who's gonna be living there.
Right.
I can tell you with confidence, we would want to plant that anyway. Um, but no, that was.
To block that drive.
That's right, yeah, I mean, we're, we've got to sell that house to somebody, so we want to provide them a quality product. No, you, that's a great point, we're, we had proposed it originally front-load.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a staff comment today, which I thought was a good one, just because the townhomes are rear-load there. Um, but I think either scenario, we're, we're happy.
As long as there's some appropriate buffering to those twin homes, I think it would be fine. And obviously, not, to not have a curb cut for every driveway would be ideal.
So, but I would love to see the amenities moved. Comments currently on the table are, these are new from staff, I felt like they were good. The only one in question is the removal of single-family detached lots.
Not a matter of question, he said it's, he walks if he doesn't get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I'm not here to, you know, put my foot in the ground, that's not at all what I'm trying to do.
That's what I thought you did.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I understand.
I just want to, I, I'm gonna lay my cards down, like, that one, it would kill it, it really would. And it, that's not y'all's problem, that's my problem, I just didn't want you to not know that.
I do understand what Jana is saying, though, from a commercial to a single-family detached home is a little bit a harsh transition.
And so the, the comment in question is not switch those with, with twins, which we'd be fine with. It is eliminate that and make ten acres of commercial, that's what I can't.
So you are amenable to maybe reconfiguring some of this?
Sure.
Should it, okay, well, that's important.
Absolutely. The, the, the important number to us is the total lot count, obviously. Where we put those, we can work together. But if we, if we have to go ten, fifteen acres of commercial, I'm just not a commercial developer. Again, that's my problem, not y'all's, I just want you to know where we're at.
Can I, ma'am, chairman, may I make a little thought check? On projects that we get that are this complex, we often have up, more opportunity to stu-, study and negotiate, that's what the PDD is for. And, um, up until tonight, we've really had no legal basis for, upon which we can evaluate this, because we didn't have the plan that had been approved in the City Council. So I know time is money, particularly in the real estate business. However, perhaps, since we have the staff recommending something that they feel is important, the developer feels that implementing it would be very detrimental to his project, perhaps before we act on this, we have another session, postponed to have a work session regarding it, uh, so that we can fully vet the project in, in, against our plans, because he said it right, this sets the tone for that end of town up there. It is our gateway and in the south end of that same corridor, the city has pretty much control over it, because they, we have a cooperative district on one side and the city owns the other side. But up here, this is a whole different sec, it's private sector, gonna be developing it and we need to make sure that we're working in, in sync with the private sector, so.
I do, I do understand your comment, however, I will also say that we have just annexed and rezoned and sent that to City Council without a PDD. And a PDD, in my opinion, does our city situation better than leaving it, because they don't have to come back.
Well, the city doesn't have to, 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 uh, City Council doesn't have to approve the, the CDD yet either.
I don't have control over that, I'm just saying that we've already moved that down the road. Happen without the PDD, that could be really bad.
Maybe if you comment, I'm sorry.
I'd move to postpone until a regular meeting in October. Item number six on the agenda.
Totally see, like, just from our perspective, um, I, I hate that y'all are just now seeing this for the first time. Like I said, we submitted it in June.
We didn't have any legal basis upon which we could evaluate it.
There's a motion on the floor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
There is no second.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Roll call vote please.
Bridges?
No.
Baker?
No.
Lazzendi?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Marshall?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Breitenbach?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay. That means that this is postponed to date certain of ten fourteen. For the PDD only.
For the PDD only, okay.
With these conditions.
Madam Chairman, if, if we need a work session, if y'all were amenable, the rest of us are amenable to it. Madam Chairman, if, if we need a work session, if y'all were amine, the rest of us are amenable to it to sit down and, and vet it, it'd have to be a public meeting, but we could vet it, um, you know, at a, at a work session as well, if you want to call that. That's your, your call, Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kep.
The next component of this is somewhat moot.
That is correct.
The conditioning is, but I, I think it is, um, your decision if you want to make a recommendation on the city council for the conditional uses. Um, and I'm happy to present that if you're interested.
At this, at this time, it is currently being pushed down the road to city council with certain zonings in place. And without conditional uses in what we were presented tonight, I kind of, I mean, y'all decide, do we postpone it or do we move forward?
Could I, could I offer a comment?
Yes.
As I understand it, so the, the PDD, which you've just deferred or postponed to October, this conditional use functions and is part and parcel to the PDD. It sets the uses in place for the PDD. So since you voted to postpone the PDD, I would think it'd be most appropriate to go ahead and postpone consideration of this item as well.
Madam Chairman, I'd move to postpone item seven until the next regular meeting, I think, October to, whatever that date is.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten fourteen. Thank you. Right, now, we are gonna move forward to our consent agenda. Let us know what's on that today. Mr. Foot, will you present our consent agenda this evening?
To me, I wasn't prepared to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would be glad to do that.
No.
So if all I need to do is read every item, is that what you need me to do?
Yes, please.
Should have warmed my voice up, I guess. No? What?
Typically, we have to read them all, do we?
Typically, the consent doesn't go through each item. If they need to pull any items off the consent, it's.
So, sounds like if you want to pull any items off consent agenda, you could make a motion to do that just now. If you don't, then I think you could go forward with a motion to approve everything on the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item eight through sixteen on the consent agenda, as well as the packet meeting minutes of August the ninth and the regular meeting of August twelfth.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One. We. Everybody's moving papers. We will move forward to new business at this time, um, zoning ordinance text amendment.
Yes, ma'am, good evening. Case in front of you is a zoning ordinance text amendment presented by staff. It's a recommendation to amend Articles two, four, five, six, seven, and eight of the Auburn zoning ordinance. The changes involve a lot of corrections to previous cross-references that might be, uh, weren't updated during previous changes, as well as it eliminates some obsolete language regarding, um, regarding some, uh, uses that are no longer applicable. It corrects the Public Works Department to Engineering Services Department, and also changes the, the planning jurisdiction distance from five miles to three miles in light of the, uh, Alabama changing its, uh, planning jurisdiction legislation this year. And then there are two, uh, two sections of language that apply to setbacks and parking that are already existing in the zoning ordinance, but we feel like it needs to be relocated into areas that are a little bit more intuitive to find, uh, relating to, uh, residential, residential uses and, and urban, uh, core and urban neighborhood specific, uh, parking areas.
And to be clear, that's just a location change? There were no actual text changes?
That's correct. For tho, for those two, and those two specifically, there was a section for setbacks that was set toward off on its own. Um, we take, we've eliminated that specific section and taken it and put it in the performance and conventional subdivision language. And then for parking, we took the, uh, those, those specific zoning district, uh, language verbiage out of the parking section and moved them over into the tables. Uh, the, the table five, three through seven.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I'll open that now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve twenty twenty-one, four, five, seven.
With all, well, it didn't really have staff comments, does it?
Just I'll second.
They're pushing. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any po, any opposed? Thank you. Subdivision regulation text amendment.
Yes, good evening. This is a, um, similar request by staff, um, to Jay's, um, staff report for the zoning ordinance cleanup. This is a subdivision regulation cleanup to all articles of the subdivision regulations, Article one through six. The, most of them are in line with what Jay had mentioned, just updating engineering services, where the existing regulations reference engineering services as public works, and incorporating the state's planning jurisdiction reduction from five miles to three miles. And we added a few definitions in Article two. Article three, the application procedures, we made some revisions in how applications are received and how we receive recorded plaits, as well as additional items that are, well, one additional item that we are requiring on, um, subdivision plaits. Um, that is a purpose statement, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I will open the public hearing now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve BL twenty twenty-one, five, five, five subdivision regulations cleanup.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I've got under discussion.
Okay.
A question. Uh, on this jurisdiction, we've reduced it from five miles to three miles. Is that?
That's correct. The state did that back in July, I believe. That was when it was effective, July twenty-sixth.
According to a state requirement, we've got to draw our range back in just a little.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have Miracle Road subdivision redivision of lot. No, wait, did I miss one?
I'm an IT.
You didn't.
Miracle Road subdivision.
Moment, packet may be out. This isn't titled the same thing. It's not titled the same thing, thank you. It, Miracle Road right-of-way preliminary plat.
Yes, ma'am. There was a few name changes as the revisions came in, but, um, this is a request, uh, for a preliminary plat followed by a final plat, uh, to essentially take what is an existing lot of record, remove the lot lines, and, uh, dedicate it to the City of Auburn as right-of-way with associated drainage and utility easements. Um, staff recommends approval, and it meets the subdivision requirements. Uh, the reason this is before you tonight is because all plaits showing new rights-of-way have to go through the planning commission, uh, and then they're accepted by city council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This also requires a public hearing. I'd like to open that now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll move to approve twenty twenty-one, five, three, four, and under all its names.
With, with the staff condition?
Yes. Was any comments? What's the conditions?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Kep.
The, uh, next application is the final plat for the same subdivision. Happy to answer any questions, and staff does recommend approval with all conditions.
This does not require a public hearing as a final plat. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve BL twenty twenty-one, five thirty-five with all staff conditions.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Howell.
This, uh, case is a, is a request for a preliminary plat of forty-one lots. Um, it will include twenty-one single-family residential lots and eighteen townhouse lots on approximately fourteen point eight acres. It's part of the Yarborough Farms Plan Development District and, uh, on the, just on the northeast side of the Shug Jordan and Richland area. As you see here, it's surrounded mostly by the planning, by the rest of the PDD to the north and east, and some rural zoning districts to the west and south, which are mostly, uh, school, uh, school uses. This is a copy of the, the most recent master development plan. Uh, so the highlighted area in red is second, are both sections B one and B two. Uh, they are some of the, they are the final portions of the, of the PDD to come before you for subdivision, um, to, uh, and so this is the first time we've gotten a chance to finally see the, uh, the layouts of those, those proposals. All right, this is a, uh, this is the, the proposed plat. It involves two different cul-de-sacs. The, the northern cul-de-sac is an extension of titleless way across the opposite side of Yarborough Farms Boulevard. All single-family homes will take its access off of that cul-de-sac. Um, on the south, you have the, uh, another cul-de-sac coming in off, directly off of Yarborough Farms Boulevard that will provide access for the townhouse developments, uh, that are part of this subdivision. Based on the, the layouts of the, the layouts of the, the lots, you can see that there will, there will be, uh, approxi, there will be different, different structures each with three units each, uh, for that, for those townhouse portions. The future land use, uh, future land use designation for this area is Plan Development District, which is the, uh, the standard designation for all PDDs. The average single-family home site is approximately, uh, point two eight acres, and the average townhouse sites are approximately point two six acres for a, uh, with an approximate density of two point six three dwelling units per acre. And the proposed layout is consistent with the, uh, with the master development plan, so staff is recommending approval. I've received communication from many of the neighbors around, mostly looking for information. Uh, they did not express to me any opposition or, uh, or in favor.
There are a number of conditions. Is there anything impactful?
Uh, most of the conditions are related to form, the form and, uh, and, and survey work. And so most making sure that that conforms with the subdivision regulations in terms of, uh, the information that's presented on the plat, that kind of thing. Uh, right-of-way widths, labeling, that kind of thing. And, uh, the representative is here.
Um, this does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that now. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm not a public speaker, so.
Your name and address.
Okay, my name's Alex Jay, A-L-E-X-J-A-Y, and I live at nineteen sixty-six, uh, Yarborough Farms Boulevard. Um, so I have some questions. Um, when is the earliest they would anticipate any clearing or site work to begin? I know Michael may be able to answer it, or, um, I guess.
You just ask them all, and then we'll have some rebuttal time.
Okay, and then the second question is, in the single-family section, what is the planned minimum square footage of homes and the approximate anticipated price point? Uh, my third question, in the townhome section, what is the planned minimum square footage of each unit and approximate price point? Fourth question, will the townhomes be positioned on the lots, uh, closer to the street with more buffer or the backyard shown like on the master plan? Or what will be, um, the townhome structure layout? What will it look like? Um, and lastly, will the townhomes have front driveways only outside? Um, and will there be an alley, uh, to have the driveways on the back of the townhomes? Thank you.
Thank you. We have some answers for you.
You sign in now.
And don't forget to sign in, please, whenever. I, I'm not sure actually where that is.
Right up here.
Thank you. Uh, public hearing, if anyone else would like to come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Representative, would you have any thing to say?
Good afternoon. I'm David Solcom. I'm the civil engineer for the project. Unfortunately, a lot of those questions I can't answer. They're very detailed and oriented more towards the builder side of things, and I'm more on the overall planning side of things. Um, I'm not sure what the construction schedule is, um, square footage and that type of stuff. I would encourage her to contact, uh, Michael Dilworth's office, and they'll be able to give her maybe the schedule and, and some of that information. There was one, oh, the driveways will be front-loaded. That's about the only one I can.
Both sections? Single-family and.
Yeah, the single-family will be typical, single-family. But the price and all that kind of stuff is details I really don't get into, so, um, she should be able to get those answers from Dilworth.
Based on your experience in working with the, the owner or the developer, do you have some general sense of the urgency of whether this may start yet this year or, or maybe put off? I mean, just give us an idea.
Yeah, my, my gut feeling would be that it would, it would begin maybe in the next two months.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, fairly, fairly short term.
That's a, yeah, gives us an idea, and I think that's maybe what she was looking for, some order of magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Closed.
Public hearing is closed, yes.
I've, I've got a question. In the packing meeting, we talked about easements, and has that problem been addressed? Or is it gonna be addressed? Or is it an issue? I, I think we were trying to improve the location of some of them and, uh, some discussion. And is that still kind of in the works?
I think on this project, and some of the feedback that we got from staff that was in the meeting, it had to do with the easement down on the lower bottom corner there to the right of the cul-de-sac. And it indicated that, that was where that sort of needed to be. It's also a narrow easement, so I don't think it's gonna have as big of an impact on the use of those properties as I would.
But it's being addressed in the preliminary.
So it's, it's being addressed here. I don't think it's being moved at this point in time. But I think it's a, it's a good point, a good discussion we had, so that moving forward, we're all aware of those types of issues, and we'll be looking at it.
The other thing I wanted to mention at a packing meeting, it came up a, an idea which I, thinking about it, it's, it's, uh, I think it's a good idea, if it can be done. And that is, in these wetland areas where people cannot build, is to make a note on the plat, non-buildable area. And I, I mean, we put all other kind of notes on the, on the plat. That may be beneficial to the general public and answer a lot of questions and, and eliminate some concern and consternation later on. If that would be possible, I would offer it as a suggestion to staff to, on each of those lots, non-buildable areas be identified.
I think that's a reasonable request, and I've seen that done on plaits. It would, could be a simple note. There's a note section on the left-hand side. You know, any of the plat, any of the lots that are impacted by the hundred-year floodplain, for instance, you know, there could be a note that says lots blank through blank are impacted by the floodplain, and that there are restrictions regarding the use of, of those areas. And that could be added as a condition if you wanted them to add it, because this is a preliminary plat, I think, right?
I may need to apologize.
Going forward.
The suggestion was to my fellow colleagues on the.
Well, I don't know that we have that purview today. I think that that is a, I mean, that's a question.
And I was gonna, to Steve's point, that's, that's something we look at during the DRT process. In some cases, they may mitigate wetlands or, or, um, jurisdictional streams, and they do that during the development review process, and then they technically go away. So, it's definitely something we can consider. So, as we're looking at the engineering plans, if there are wetlands identified on the plat, if they stay, we'll make an appropriate note on final plat.
Yeah, that's all I would ask, you know, so people know ahead of time.
Yes, absolutely.
If, if they, if they take the time to look at the plat before they buy the property, but you, we can't do anything about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I understand. That's great. Okay, commissioners, any other discussion or motions?
I move to approve item twenty-one on the agenda.
With conditions?
Yes, I'm sorry, with staff conditions.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Howell?
All right, your next case is another preliminary plat, this time on the north side of town, the Farmville Lakes Plan Development District. It's located at the intersection of Highway two eighty and East Farmville Road. Like I said, in the Farmville Lakes PDD, it is a proposal for a four-lot subdivision that will include three future development sites and one open space site. It's on the far east side of the PDD. This is the, the last portion of that PDD also for, to see some subdivision activity. To the, to the east of it, you have county property, or at least camp, property that's inside the county, and then to the south, you have, uh, area in the Tuscany subdivision in the DDH district, or, excuse me, Timbally, or no, that's, uh, Ashton. Yeah, I'll get it right one of these times. Here's a, a copy of the master development plan for this portion. You can see its location in regards to everything else. They're highlighted in red. Everything to the immediate west of it are townhome developments, and then further west, you start getting into the, the single-family develops and those phases right there. Before I get off the MVP here, I'll, when this was a first approved in twenty eighteen, there was, uh, there was, there was allowances for two different kind of scenarios for this particular phase, one being entirely commercial, and one being a mix of commercial and multifamily. And so, based on, based on the subdivi, based on the submission, they're pursuing the, um, the scenario that includes residential dwellings. As part of a subdivision for multifamily, you don't actually get specific home sites, but, so you just get the single site. Based on the MVP, though, I can tell you that it would be no more than sixty-one multifamily units, uh, on, uh, split between the two different lots on either side of the, uh, the Cloverdale extension there. The opposite, the, the lot to the north of that, at the intersection of Farmville and two eighty, would be the commercial site, and then the open space site is down the very south. This subdivision would also extend the, extend Cloverdale to the, to the highway, and would, uh, staff has wanted to make sure we add a note that no direct access to those sites be taken from two eighty, and everything has to be done through the, uh, done through the, the red, through the development portion itself, immediately off of, either immediately off of, um, Cloverdale or the, that road right there, which I can't see.
So, there's not a curb cut for the Cloverdale extension?
That right there is a, there is a stubout. Uh, there, you'll see that there's a staff note that talks about the alignment of it. On the, on the plat itself, they, uh, did not provide the, the full fifty feet width. It was just a little bit shy. That's one of the comments that's in there as well. But again, those will be addressed during the, before they have, before they can bring the final to us. And with this sixty-one multifamily unit, uh, scenario, if we're looking at a density of approximately six point three dwelling units an acre, uh, it's in line with the master development plan, and, you know, staff is recommending approval with the conditions noted in your packet. And here is a, over aerial. I have not received any correspondence for this.
This does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that now. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion, motions, comments?
I would make a comment. I think the engineering comment number two is very well-taken, and I would move to approve item twenty-two with the, uh, with the conditions, staff conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, uh, next two applications are preliminary and final plat for, uh, Sarah Lane. This is a, currently a private road. It's privately owned. It serves these lots, uh, out here in between Woodward Oaks, North Donhue Drive, and the, Auburn Farms Plan Development District. Again, just like in the earlier case, any plats dedicating rights of way or easements require approval by the planning commission. And this will go forward to the city council for acceptance of that right-of-way and easements. Plat meets, meets all the subdivision requirements, and staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. As a preliminary plat, this does require a public hearing. I'll open that now.
Good evening to all of you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jesse Shealy, and I'm the resident owner of nineteen sixty-two Miracle Road, and I just wanted to stand before all of you and say, these men and women who have been working on our, both of our roads, Miracle Road and Sarah Lane, have been doing an outstanding job, and this is really noteworthy for the city to show, um, teamwork effort, and I just wanted to say thank you, all of you, for being in support of this. I hope that it goes through, and it's approved tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Would you, yes, please? Thank you so much. Anyone else? Public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you so much for your comments. Um, commissioners?
I move to approve twenty-twenty-one-five-four-three with staff conditions.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Keppler?
The next application is for the same property and same reasons. Uh, here is the final plat. No change from the previous case. Uh, staff recommends approval with all conditions.
Okay, this final plat does not require a public hearing.
Move on approval of item twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, uh, next request is a preliminary plat request for Auburn Farms Phase One. This is a fifty-four lot performance subdivision, which includes thirty single fam, single-family detached lots, twenty-two townhome lots, one utility lot, and one open space lot. The subject property is, uh, has a base zoning of DDH, and is, is within a Plan Development District. You'll see the Sarah Lane, uh, which ties into it, will be its main access point, and it will be improved to a public street once it's accepted. This is the master development plan that was approved back in twenty seventeen, and the plat essentially encompasses, uh, this portion and some of the townhome portions. Here is the, uh, preliminary plat for the subdivision. Uh, you'll see Sarah Lane extends and ends in a elbow, which would extend up eventually, including the townhome lots here. These lots would, uh, be single-family detached up until you get to about here. There are some floodplains on the, uh, property, and, um, there are some conditions in the staff report, uh, mostly cosmetic things to clean up the, uh, plat. The, otherwise, the plat does meet the, um, density requirements and subdivision regulations for the Plan Development District, and therefore, staff recommends approval with all conditions. And I believe that, yep, the, uh, property owner's representative is here, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. As preliminary plat, this does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that now.
Do you need one more time? I'm Jesse Shealy, a resident of nineteen sixty-two Miracle Road. I'm not real certain on this map if it shows that the property butts up against the back side of my property, and my concern is that, um, I'm hoping that they will tear down the barn that's partially located on my property. So, we need to make sure we address that, uh, that they, um, take that off of our property and, uh, with, with the proposed building, okay? That's all I have to say. I don't know if this is something that, um, that we need to personally handle between the, uh, owner or, of the property, or if this is something that you all need to consider that, that barn is on our property, and it needs to be removed before it can be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to sign anything on? You're good. Public hearing is still open? Yes, you're the representative, right? I can close the public hearing first. Thank you. You can come forward, yes. You're good.
Good evening, Mike Marr. I represent Precision Surveying and representing Tiger Creek. Uh, the only thing I would say, I'll get with Mrs. Shealy, and we'll find out where that barn's located, figure out if it is on the property line, and, uh, we'll work with Tiger Creek and get it removed if, if it is indeed on the property line. Any other questions, I'm here to answer.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Since this is a final plat, I guess, I don't have it in front of me right now.
It's preliminary.
It's preliminary plat on this one? Okay. Because typically, you'll show improvements. If there is a barn, let's say it's not on her lot, but it's on this property, uh, then you'd want to make sure that it's shown on that plat, and typically have a note that says it's going to be removed or, you know, demolished, those types of things, so just make sure that, that's handled. That'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. You're in the right hands now. Somebody who can do it. Um, I have a preliminary plat. Commissioners?
I move to approve twenty-twenty-one-five-four-five with staff conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Howell?
This is a preliminary plat request for a three-lot subdivision in the DDH zoning district. The primary purpose of this plat is actually to dedicate, or to start the process of dedicating the right-of-way for the future, this portion of the, uh, the future connector between MLK and Richland. As you can see, this is in the Plainsman Lake area, uh, that you heard last month for three separate subdivisions. Uh, this was a follow-up from the, that the city had for the applicant to submit this, so that the city can move forward with its, uh, construction without waiting for the final of those, uh, those residential developments to, to occur. This is the subdivision, the, uh, the three different lots in question. There's a commercial zone DD, uh, excuse me, zone CDD lot towards the south, with, uh, the majority of the property being in the DDH on either side, that would, uh, can, uh, but they, those two lots would encompass the, the future development of those subdivision, those residential subdivisions you heard last month. The right-of-way itself extends north and south through the property along the western, along the western side, um, and the applicant has been working with, uh, with the city on making sure that the, uh, that the layout there meets the, the engineered plans for the road itself. I've received, uh, correspondence from the adjoining property owner to the west, who was, uh, in favor of the, in favor of the, the subdivision, uh, so long as it followed its shown path.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that now. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I've, I've got a question, Madam Chairwoman.
Absolutely.
How far is the northern end of this roadway from Richland Road, roughly? And I think we've got another, we, the city, has another project under design or out to be, can you bring us up to date a little bit about the continuity of this and maybe some timeline?
Yes, sir. This is, um, this piece is the southern portion of what we're calling our Richland Connector. It will go from Martin Luther King Drive up to Richland Road and tie across from the westernmost Creekside Elementary, uh, Drive. So, this is about, not quite half of what we need. There's a portion of property that's owned by Auburn City Schools that will acquire right-of-way from, and then the city owns everything north of that. We are probably about eighty-five to ninety percent complete with design, and we hope to be out to bid in a couple of months, hopefully by November.
Very good. With these two projects, there's only one little link left in between, and that's, uh, and that property's owned by the school board.
Yes, the school board owns, look, about this much on the map, and then we own the remainder.
That's, that's really what I call progress. I think y'all have done great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having said that, I'd move, probably, move to approve item twenty-six on the agenda with conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, good evening. This is a conditional use request from David Langston on behalf of Robert Fucci, the property owner at fourteen twenty-six Sagahatchee Road in the Corridor Redevelopment District Suburban, which is just off of Opelika Road. Um, this is just an outline of the site. Um, the, this is a kind of unique conditional use request in that it's coming to you after a variance request was denied by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The lot is currently classed as a single-family residence, um, which you can see is the structure just under the number forty-two there, um, with an existing accessory structure. It shows two here that's actually connected, um, now. The variance request was to allow a, the existing accessory structure to have an addition that would put it, um, over the fifty percent allowed for accessory structures with a single-family residence. This building is actually currently being used as storage, uh, for Mr. Fucci. I believe he is, um, real estate realty, so building material is more than likely. So, once that request was denied, we discussed with the applicant and felt that because of the surrounding, um, similar uses of commercial uses and the Corridor Redevelopment District zoning, that it may be more appropriate to request conditional use of a warehouse for this structure, making this lot a mixed-use lot. So, the single-family residence would remain, um, but the, uh, structure in the rear of the property would be classed as a warehouse use, and thereby permitting, um, its current, basically, its current use as well as the addition, um, for this property. And I believe the applicant is here, and I'd be, also be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. This does require a public hearing as, as conditional use approval. I'll open that now. Are you the representative? You can speak outside the public hearing. Thank you. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and if you have questions for the applicant, representative, or staff.
I'll make a motion to approve PL twenty-twenty-one-five-two-eight with all.
Got excited?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Right, um, the final item on tonight's agenda is a request from the City of Auburn for conditional use approval for a public service use, specifically a municipal office building. The subject property is located at forty-two seventy-seven Wire Road. The subject property is located at 4277 Wire Road, which is just north of Beehive. It's currently outside of the city limits, but during a previous action on tonight's agenda, you recommended approval of its annexation. And it's comprised of three parcels that will be consolidated into one lot through an administrative subdivision. This use will facilitate relocation of the city's Environmental Services and Public Works Departments, which are currently housed on, on North Donahue Drive, just north of Martin Luther King Drive and Bragg Avenue. And this new complex will provide office and warehouse spaces for these departments as well as space for the city's fleet services, a fueling station and equipment and material storage. Staff had very minor comments on the site plan and the plan is currently under DRT review. And staff recommends that the use request be forwarded to city council for approval. And if so, they will both be scheduled for the September 21st agenda.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I'm gonna open that now. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve PL 2021-551 with all conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Appreciate your patience. Me, twice. Me, adjourned.